How about now, can everyone hear us?
I can hear you.
Okay.
I got you.
Awesome, sounds good. The time is now 7:05 PM and I will call this meeting to order. May we have roll call, please?
Mayor Riekel?
Here.
Pro Tem Hanahan?
Here.
Trustee Brittenall?
Here.
Trustee Klassen?
Here.
Trustee Flores?
Here.
Trustee Poston?
Here.
Trustee Seifert?
Here.
All right, may we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, be seated. All right, the first item on tonight's agenda is public comments. Persons desiring to make a public comment on items not on the agenda, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, do we have any phone calls or emails in regards to non-agenda items?
No, I did not hear from anyone today.
Thank you.
Uh huh. I do not show any raised hands.
Okay. We have some members of the public filing in right now, so. Would any members of the public that just joined us like to speak on non-agenda items?
Representatives.
Okay. All right, we have nobody signed in, so we will move on. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of new employees in the Police Department.
Good evening. We have two new officers. Jerry Elcorta is the, a new reserve officer with the department. And then we have Calvin Portwood, who is going to start the academy in January.
All right.
Welcome aboard.
Yes, pleased to meet you both.
To be here. Appreciate it.
Do you have any questions?
Why Silt?
Why Silt? I used to work with Matt, Lieutenant Grunbeck, back in, I don't know, was it like five, six years ago?
Yeah.
With Lenwood. With Lenwood, and yeah, so I hear a lot of great things coming out of Silt PD these days, so. I'd like to come over.
Okay.
I chose Silt because I actually used to be a local tow truck driver here. I worked for about three and a half years. Got to know all these guys on a personal level and how much I worked with them towing cars for them and stuff. And I did have some interest with Garfield County, but I kind of clicked a little bit better with our Silt officers and got to know them outside of work as well. And just felt like I fit in a lot better here than over at county. Pretty happy to be here, pretty excited.
You are right.
I know.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Yes.
So what is a, what is a reserve officer, if you could explain that?
He, so Jerry was an officer with the Glone Springs Police Department and a sergeant with Carbonell Police Department. So he's been through the academy, he was an actual officer. And right now he's got a full-time job. He's a pastor at a church up in LaSalle. And so he does that full-time. And so that he doesn't lose his officer certification through the state of Colorado. He can become a reserve officer. And still get in, you have to put in so many hours per year with training and actual like working a shift to maintain your post-certification. And so that's what Jerry was wanting to do and we're more than happy to have him.
He volunteered in his time, he's not being paid.
Oh, okay.
I like that.
I mean, that's an important part. Important detail, yeah.
All right. Carried the lead there.
Gives you a good idea of, you know, that he truly wanted to be here.
Yes.
That may change at a later date, but right now, he's happy where he's at.
And I did want to know that we have some openings.
No.
Well played.
Good luck to have me, Jeremy.
And then Mr. Portwood, when do you go to the academy?
Mid-January.
Okay. All right. Awesome.
I like it, yes.
Good luck with that, congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you guys, yes.
Thank you guys.
Have a wonderful evening, thank you for coming in.
You too, thanks for having us.
Thanks.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the consent agenda that contains the minutes of the November 27th, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting. Resolution number 37, Series 2023. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt to set various town fees and deposits for January 1st, 2024 to December 31st, 2024. Resolution number 38, Series 2023. A resolution adopting a penalty assessment schedule and schedule of administrative fees for the Town of Silt, Colorado Municipal Court, and the renewal of the fermented malt beverage and wine liquor license for Golden Gate Petroleum. Would any members like to speak on any of those items separately or make a motion?
I would like to speak about the penalty assessment increases, is that the right terminology, Sheila?
That sounds great, Derek.
Okay.
I feel better already.
All right. Is all the members of the board okay with discussing that item?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
All right.
Specifically, the speeding penalty or fee increases. And I talked with Sheila at Town Hall earlier today about this. I noticed they used a 20% model where they were, it was a flat increase of 20% across the board. Whether, and it's, the, the amount that you're speeding by is broken into segments. So I think it was one to four, five to nine. Don't remember beyond that, give me a moment.
I'm bringing it up for you.
Thank you. And if our intention, if the purpose of this is ultimately to change behavior, then I feel like we should have a sliding scale. I feel like what, in full disclosure, hopefully the police aren't too close, but I occasionally go one to four miles an hour over the speed limit in town. Sometimes it's just not at the front of my brain. I'm okay with 20% or maybe even less for one to four, because it just happens. It's not that far off in a 25 mile per hour zone. If you're doing either five to nine or 10 or more, I'm not sure that 20% is going to be enough to drive a change in behavior, which is ultimately what we're after, is increased safety. And to that end, it needs to be punitive, it needs to be behaviorally changing.
I'm just, I'm looking at the numbers to see that we, you know, one to four, if I'm reading the chart right, we went from 50 to 60. Five to nine, 80 to 96. 10 to 18, 100 to 120. And 20 to 24, 200 to 240.
But parking in front of a hydrant went from 20 to 100, which is way above anything else that's on that list.
That's kind of separate from the speeding itself, though. We did increase all of the parking tickets and that's inclusive on the parking tickets specifically.
It looked like all the parking violations doubled, if I'm seeing that correct.
Yeah, except the hydrant, but, and I know it's separate, but, you know, in, in to what Pro Tem Hanahan said, you know, that hydrant parking to $100 far exceeds the increase for speeding. And so why is parking in front of a hydrant a higher penalty than speeding?
Matt, did you want to answer that or Chief Kite?
They've both left the chambers with us, I'm not sure if they're on the Zoom meeting or not.
They're on it, they must not be in their office.
Okay. Now, I'm going to agree with Mayor Pro Tem that the increase in fines, I don't think is enough to deter people from, from speeding. I even look at the one to four over. I mean, four over in a 15 is almost 25% over the speed limit. So that's doing 100 in a 75. You know, roughly.
Of course, the safety difference of that increase versus this is quite a bit different, but I understand what you're saying.
I mean, a kid jumping out between a car at the difference between 15 and 20 in a 15 mile an hour zone is, is life or death, just as it is on the highway.
So it's, it's worth mentioning that Sheila already has a worksheet, a spreadsheet, with, what was it Sheila, 10, 20, and 30% increases?
That's correct.
What, what that change in percentage would result in in terms of the fees themselves? Is everyone here okay if she provides that documentation to us now while we're having the discussion? So that we can see the hard numbers?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
I'd like to see it, yeah.
And to your point, Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with one to four over also being inclusive of any increase that we make. I ultimately just want people to go slower.
Slower?
I mean, that's, we've all been pleading for them to do it in our board comments every meeting.
I think what Trustee Klassen is, some of the thing with the one to four, though, is one to four can be inadvertent. That gets, that's kind of a, I wasn't paying exactly attention or whatever, versus anything over that is then become a conscious decision.
Conscious decision.
Hi, Mike, just jump in here. We have been working on our traffic enforcement slash traffic calming committee with the staff, including our town engineer. He is preparing some feedback to some data that we, that we've been able to, to pull down from our speed cameras. It's not camera, speed radar devices. And we plan to present you with that data in January and then kind of move forward with a little bit more detailed conversation about traffic calming in the future. How that impacts fines and fees, I think, could be part of that conversation or if you wanted to do something now. I will say that, and Chief Kite can weigh in on this, that, that, and probably even.
Right here, Jeff.
Sheila, that chances of a motorist being stopped for going one to four over the speed limit is probably pretty slim.
Non-existent. Generally, we, unless there's something else attached with like careless driver or something, we usually don't stop till 10 over. The one to four, five to nine, and these, and the codes up to the side are from the state statute book. And this is just something that's been in there for ever and it's just never been taken out. I've never heard of anybody even being written a tick for one to four over. So you, as long as I'm here, you'll never see a one to four or five to nine unless there's, like I said, there's something else extraordinary that I've never seen yet, you won't see that.
And that's really a matter of resources. You know, you can't have officers stopping every person at five miles an hour over the speed limit. Just, you just, you just couldn't, you couldn't maintain that, wouldn't be sustainable.
Chief, do you think there's a correlation between the cost of a fine and what people choose to do? Because I'm assuming most people don't know the fine until they're sitting in court.
Exactly.
I'm, I'm going to walk down that center line and say yes and no. One, if you're doing 10, 15, 20 over, you know the fines are going to be hefty. You know you're going to get, it's going to hit you in the pocketbook. Or it's going to give you a day in court, which is probably going to hit you in the pocketbook again with time off work and whatever else. As for it to make a difference? I don't think so. We've got some of the lower fines in the area. I think State Patrol's the highest. And they're writing about as many tickets as they want. Like, we could go one way or you could go the other way. It may deter some, but others, I hate to say it, but just don't care. They're going to do what they're going to do.
No, that's true, it's almost like a speed limit sign that flashes red and blue if you're going over the speed limit. It's almost more effective than higher fines.
Yeah, you notice that one going on the rifle now. I didn't notice that until that, that makes a difference, that really.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's the one I'm talking about, yes.
You get to notice.
Sounds like we're getting more information later on down the road. And it sounds like this is a conversation that we should spend some time on. I'd be in favor of adopting these fines raises now as is and then have our conversation with more information later and figuring out the, maybe a sliding scale like.
The traffic calming, what he's talking about and stuff, yeah.
Consent agenda, a lot of times not enough time to actually just, to make the proper changes or anything to, for this.
I'd like to hear a little more about this traffic, what he's got planned, and then we can always revisit it from there.
I do like the sliding scale too, just because, I mean, the faster you're going, when you get them really good.
Yep.
And it should be that way, yeah.
Yeah.
And these are resolutions, so they're fairly easy to change.
Yeah.
At a later date.
Yep.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we're going with the 20% then?
Yep. For now.
I think, yeah, I'd agree that the more information, the better before we make a decision. I mean, it's easy enough to say, yeah, let's go 50% and then not have a reason behind it. Besides, it's just a number and we hope it does something. I'd rather have concrete evidence of what we can do.
Well, and I hope to have date, not only data, but also some, some research-based opinions from our town engineer, who has, has worked in this arena before.
Okay. Are you on board with that?
All good.
Mayor Pro Tem?
All good.
All right. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No, sir.
Out of this item, yeah.
Hope you feel better.
I'm good with it.
Okay, so any further discussion with the consent agenda or would someone like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Klassen to approve the consent agenda as presented, seconded by Trustee Seifert. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, do any board members have any conflicts of interest with agenda items tonight?
No, sir.
We've got none? Do we have any agenda changes by the board or by staff?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay, looks like the board has none. So next up is the Silt Affordable Housing Presentation with Greg Friedman. And I will invite you up to the front table and then turn this over to Administrator Lehman.
Once Greg and his team get settled, I'll probably turn it over to them. But as you might remember, this is sort of a combination of conversations that we've had in the past. One, about the 15 acre parcel on River Fernand Road and the development of that by Doug Olson, who came in and spoke with you some time ago. And then we've also talked about the initiative by Greg Friedman to, to basically develop housing. It kind of started as a housing project for the employees at Valley View Health. And they've kind of teamed up to come up with something that would, I think, benefit all. So I'll, I'll turn it over to Greg now that I think I see him.
Hi Greg, hi Jeff. I don't look the same anymore, right? My name is Gregory Friedman and together with my partner Ian Fair, who's not here tonight, and Doug Olson, I want to thank you very much for enabling this working session as quickly as you did after we requested it. We have 30 minutes and the presentation is a lot longer than that, I presume. You've all looked at the presentation and perhaps read the letter that I, I wrote to Jeff about how he did the transition.
Yes.
I propose to have Sheila go through the charts. I'll say a couple of words about it and use it as a trigger, if you will, to enable discussion, questions, and answers. Our goal is to try to figure out if there's any objection in an informal way to anything that we're doing before we start the entitlement process. And so hopefully tonight, if you have anything, if you're for it, you'll let us know as best you can. And if you're against it, you'll tell us why, so that we can either fix those things or pack up our kit and go somewhere else. Sheila, are you going to put our charts up? There you go. So as, as the documents that you've read indicated, I became a donor, my wife and I became donors to Valley View and we learned quickly that they were 100 units short. And, and then I started talking to the Town of Sonoma S and then some of the people at the SKECO. And the number, the number's pretty large. I think we're somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,000 housing units short in the valley for the, the number of people that, that need it. And, and so I decided to try to do this with the hospital, but unfortunately, they didn't want to be, didn't want to use donor dollars and they didn't want to be involved in the management, managing of the construction or the managing of the operation of it. So with that, I turned to Jeff and I ended up with my new partners who had an option on this land and they were like-minded and so here we are. Let's zip to the next chart. That, this is a, the most, most recent work from Doug Pratt, who's here with us tonight. This is the, the building layout for both the commercial and the residential space that we have planned. The project, our idea is that not only is it affordable housing, but it includes childcare because the, the second word out of the CEO's mouth at the hospital was, "And if you give me a house, you gotta, you gotta take care of the kids." It's just a major problem. So we've just built that into the, into the structure. If you have any questions about the, the layout of the property, then Doug is here to answer them. We're planning to use prefab modular construction. The inescapable truth is that the construction cost has to be affordable if we're going to rent it affordably. And so that is our plan. This is standard imagery, but it's typical of what we would be building. As we get further in the entitlement process, we'll obviously have designs and drawings. Do you have any questions so far that I, at this point, that you'd like to?
Yeah, just a quick one. Looking at those modules, so there's three stacked on one another. Is each one of them a unit or go back one, if you can see?
Is each one a single family, a single unit, or is it multiple apartments?
So, yeah, right there, you see like there's one and then there's two and then there's three stacked on top of another. Is each one of them a unit or?
There's an equal mix of, I'm sorry.
Can you?
Is there one family unit per module or is it, is it potentially multiple apartments?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, the answer is not.
So there's stairs, so one, there could be like two levels to one, okay.
I don't, there's those stairs in the units, there's a, they're, they're all on one floor, each unit.
There's a mix of studio, one bedroom and two bedrooms?
Oh, that's what I, okay.
Two bedrooms may have more than one module, the studios are.
Okay, that's what I was asking, so it's more than, more than.
It's a combination.
Okay.
Can I make a request? Would you two gentlemen mind coming to the table so that your comments can be recorded?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Bring another chair up and just.
I'll bring one over here.
There you go. Now I'll move over.
I'm Doug Pratt.
So basically, there's going to be a common stairway or level.
Right.
On the, whether is it inside or outside or whatever, but then it's going to go to the different. But it's still going to be like three levels, though.
Yes.
Okay, that's, okay.
We will, we'll need, for the density that we're talking about, in order to not cover the entire site, we'll need three stories.
We got to the density factor as, as, we approached the whole thing economically, spreadsheet modeled. Given, given the constraints that I've, I've documented that the state imposes with the affordable, the affordable rent table caps and the, and the restrictions that they have on, on whether you can pre-rent or pre-lease or not into corporations. And we ended up getting to this mix of units that produced the optimum amount of revenue to, to make the project self-sustaining. Next chart, where are we? Sheila?
I have lost my, my share screen, so give me just a moment, please.
No worries. So.
There we go.
Cool. Now you can go to the next chart. Back up a little bit? Okay. So as we said, we'll have onsite childcare. We plan to operate in either directly or indirectly an Instacart shopping service so that the essential workforce can have their food delivered and in their refrigerators and stocked before they get home. Our concept is to do both solar panels and solar mounted hot water generation on the roof with storage in, in storage, storage cells underneath the foundation and to, to provide the electrical service and the meter, the heating, the heating energy metered on a per-unit basis. And we'll be the provider and then we'll back ourselves up with the utility. And the intent is to have it at below market, obviously. We think it's going to be super safe, we think it's going to be a gorgeous place to be with our own park area and waterfront on, on the river. And the most important part, I think, is to have Rafta bus service to get, eliminate the car travel between the markets that we're serving and, and the property. Any questions on that one?
My only question on that one is, so the Town of Silt is not a member of Rafta.
But doesn't, doesn't Rafta's bus service come to?
We have a stop here, they stop once in the morning, once at night, but.
No, several times, it's just not all day long, every day.
So yeah, so I don't know if that.
We're going to have to negotiate our own deal and, and provide some guarantees or whatever. But yeah, we fully plan to do that.
Okay.
It'll be.
Just be additional bus stop would be over there, that they would be negotiating the stops on that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
We figure between us and the rest of Landy property, the density on both would warrant a bus stop, a Rafta BRT stop over there.
So the question came up initially because my partners had been in the, in the concept that they were going to build to own. And I was here saying, no, we got to build to rent. And then the reason is that, that if we sell off, once, once, once they sell off a unit to an employee, the employee may be obligated to work in the community, but not necessarily for the employer that enabled it to happen. And so then the employer loses not only the employer, but he loses the rental unit or the, the housing unit. And, and that's counter-strategic for what the employers are trying to accomplish. This is really a two, a two-party problem. It's not just an employee housing problem, it's an employer housing problem. You can't run your business if you can't hire people and you can't, and they have no place to live. And so, so in order to meet the needs of the employer, it really does need to be a rental resource so that it remains in the pool, available to the masterlesses, which will be employers. And whether the employees come and go or not, they still have the resource. And when they backfill the employee, they have a place to put them. Question?
So who are the employers that own these?
What's that?
Who are the employers that own these?
They don't own them, they have, they're the masterlesses.
What's that, can you find that?
So a masterlessie in our concept is, this is a two-party lease. The, the employers will be leasing the units out and then they will, their, their tenant, which is their employee, will also go on the lease. The state mandates the maximum amount of rent that the tenant can pay, which is, which is insufficient to build this project and operate it. So there has to be a component of the rent paid for by the employer. Either way, the employer is liable for the entire sum of the two rents and he's, he's going to do a payroll deduction out of the, out of the tenant's payroll to, to make up the portion and we're going to draft it electronically and yada, yada. So that, that's the only way we get to, we get to a cash flow positive ability to pay, you know, pay our debt, pay our debt service, pay, pay our taxes and run this, run this complex. It's not cheap. It's a, it's a $45 million project, the way, way, way we see it right now. So, so, so the, the, the marketing concept is, is once we've got our, once we've got a, a green light but haven't been through our entitlement process, we will start a concept of, of reservations, if you will. you will, and we'll sell a reservation for five grand to the employers. And that will entitle the employer to a guaranteed slot for a master lease when we start to do the master leasing. Once we get enough through the entitlement process that we know this is a go, then we'll go back and we'll convert the reservations into master leases, and we'll sign the master leases, they'll pay, at present it's calculated to be a $50,000 deposit, which will be refundable to them. And this master lease concept is something that they can sell. So they can say, it's a five-year lease, let's say, and you're two years in, business isn't going good, we got to get out of it. So they're free to then either bring us a buyer for their master lease slot, or enable us to go start marketing it to our waitlist. The minute we've closed that new deal, we've got that deposit in, then he gets his deposit back and he's out of here. And you've seen my rationale in the charts, you can't, you can't put a down payment down on a condo for 50 grand, and you can't pay the debt service and the HOA fee and the for the amount of employer rent. So I think it's a win-win deal, and it makes for an economically viable project, which is the underlying requirement before we get started.
Is there a minimum lease for the employee then, that he has to sign?
The rent, yeah. So in the charts, there's a rent cap table. And you may, can we, zero, can we jump forward? Sheila, can you jump to the rent cap table?
Is that further on, or was that the table at the very beginning?
It's further on.
Page 15.
It's like a spreadsheet.
Page 15.
15. Okay, there, she went by it, okay. So this is, this changes, this is produced based on the AMI, the area median income of the various cities and geographical areas that the state has carved up. And this one is for the Town of Silt, County of Garfield. And it has two important components. One is, in order to be able to rent this, you have to be in the income bracket on the right side of the table, from one person, two person, three person. You have to be under that number to be a qualified affordable renter. And then, it's up to us, says the landlords, to decide what rents we're going to charge, but the state says that you have to have some portion of your units at each one of the percents of AMI. So you have to actually rent some units at 20%, some at 30%, some at 40%. And I mean, you can see those numbers, it just, there's no way you get to cash flow positive. But, so we've, the yellow line is where we set ours at. Our employee component of the unit rent will be at the 60% of AMI level. And you can see that the employee portion of a two-bedroom is 1,300 bucks. So two, and you know, that's pretty, pretty good.
Really good.
And the employer portion of that is the difference between, you don't have it on that chart.
It's the next slide.
It's the next slide. If you go to the next slide, Sheila? So if you, the two-bedroom is 1,339 dollars, the unit rent's for 2,900, so the employer has to pick up the difference, or 1,100 bucks. And we got to these numbers, not by, you know, picking numbers out of the air. We do this, you know, with spreadsheet modeling, we know what our maintenance costs are going to be, we know what our tax, we've estimated what our property taxes are going to be, you know, so they're a little soft because we don't know exactly what the appraiser's going to appraise it at. But this is pretty close. Let's jump back to, so does that answer your question?
Yes.
I have a couple of comments and questions, but I'm not sure if I should just throw them in there, wait till the end.
Just throw them out, we only have 30 minutes.
So I disagree with one of your premises, which is that this is a two-party problem. I think it's a three-party problem. I think you didn't include the Town of Silt and its community members in that equation. So I will add that.
Can you elaborate to how it's their problem?
It's our problem because these people are joining our community.
Okay, from that.
Not a problem, it's an opportunity. From a certain standpoint, I also have a concern that you classify this as an affordable housing solution. I think it's really a private subsidy. I don't think it's affordable, strictly speaking, because now someone is beholden to their employer for their housing as well as their healthcare. There was a similar model to this?
That is a fact of, that is a fact of life in this communal valley, and across the nation.
And it used to exist back at the turn of the 20th century, and they were called company towns, whereby you worked for a company and they gave you housing and healthcare. And if for any reason you lost your job, you are out of the other two aspects as well. I don't feel like this is going to give our community or new members to it the flexibility that they need as citizens. I think it's going to beholden them to their employers more than they already are for healthcare, which we know is a problem.
I would say to you, that's one point of view. The other perspective is, they wouldn't get the job. They couldn't take the job. That's the problem that the CEO of Valley View has. He is 100 healthcare workers short because he cannot hire them because they can't afford to live here.
And that is really the CEO of Valley View Hospital's job. It's not this community's job.
No, but it, it, it's not the community's job, but it, it, well, there is this point of view that the problem that we face is existential, because if we can't hire the employees, we're going to lose the services that we need and the services that we like. We're going to, we're going to lose restaurants, we're going to lose, you know, we're going to be understaffed at the hospital, so.
But those people should have the ability to live in Silt and choose where they work. They shouldn't, those two, those two things should not be dependent on one another.
They do, there's nothing that says that they, that they take the job and have to take the housing.
Yeah, they're not forced to.
We're not forced.
But if they change jobs, they lose the housing.
Unless they go to a, yeah, but that's what's going on now. What's going on now is, there is no affordable housing. And so the employers are buying condos.
Which is a private subsidy, it's not an affordable housing solution. I want people to be able to afford to live in Silt regardless of who they work for. And I think a rental-only model, and we talked about this at the P&amp;Z meeting last week, Doug, you and I were both there, there's a concern within P&amp;Z, and I shared it as a public comment, that a rental-exclusive model, we talked about it with regard to Ruslanda, a rental-exclusive model does not build a community because rentals are generally transient in terms of population shift. So you don't actually build another pillar of your community or aspect of your community. People are there for shorter durations. And having a requirement of employment, I feel, is going to further reduce the length of time that someone is a member of our community.
So if I told you that there are waiters at Casa De Angelo who've worked for him for 28 years, would that change your mind?
It wouldn't, because I'm not sure that's the rule. I think it's a carefully selected exception.
Actually, what you're going to find out is that if, at least what I found out, is if people want to work in this valley, as in the essential workforce community, the only way they can is if their employers provide housing assistance, because they can't, they can't afford to rent or buy on the free market. That's a fact.
But again, this beholdens an individual to their employer for another key aspect of their life. So now we've got housing and healthcare. It's a company town. That's the model. It's the 21st century version, but it's a company town.
But what's the difference between some company buying, you know, all the houses on one block and doing the same thing?
I mean, they know that when they're going and renting it, that they're working for the company.
Right, but I think from the, from the community standpoint, if I want to build affordable housing and deploy it, I don't want it to be dependent on whom you work for. I think we need to separate those two ends.
The problem, if I may interrupt, the problem is, is that unless there's an employer subsidizing the rent.
It's too expensive.
The state, the state says that you can't charge enough, you can't charge enough to build the building and operate it.
But we have other models that have been successful. You know, Habitat for Humanity is one. There are other affordable.
That's highly subsidized, that's highly subsidized.
It is, it is subsidized, but it's not subsidized by the companies.
It's subsidized a different way.
We're also, we're also basically subsidizing for employers within the Roaring Fork Valley. What about the Crystal River Valley? Why are we solving Valley View Hospital's housing problem? If Valley View Hospital really wants to help people afford housing, they should pay them more.
Would their 192 units be solely negotiated with Valley View?
No, 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 no.
Yeah, see, it would be.
It's an example of a master lease.
My point indeed.
We fully intend to go to Skeeco, to each one of the town governments have already been in touch with Carbondale, and they all are interested in it.
And that lease is transferable?
Absolutely.
Which they can transfer to other employees as well.
Absolutely, yeah.
Uh huh, okay.
But the company controls the lease.
No, the company, if it leases a unit, it controls that one unit. If it wants to get rid of the lease, it can. It can give, sell it to another employer, no problem. It's not permanent, it's a five-year term, and it's cancelable, it's transferable at will. But you can't just vacate, you're liable until you finish the transfer, so.
Yeah, it's like the town administrator's condo that the town owns. If the town administrator, for some reason, doesn't have that job.
He has to move.
He has to move.
And I don't see as a negative attracting other people that would find employment around the valley to Silt to go dining minors' claim, to shop at our local grocery shop. I don't see what's the negative portion of bringing professionals into Silt that could potentially grow our events in our community at last.
Assuming who the end user is going to be is a pretty bold thing. There are a lot of, I mean, if Skeeco just say bought a master lease on some of these and brings in seasonal employees that have a six-month lease, those people are going to have no buy-in to the community. They have nothing more than a bedroom to sleep in to go to work in Aspen. If you're only here for six months out of the year for a wintertime job, you're not a community member. You're living in a fancy hotel.
Can there be any controls over the length of the lease? Can that be negotiated as well?
That becomes one of your, if that becomes, well, let's think about that. So if you say to the employer that you're, the same person has to stay in the unit for 12 months, that will cut out a large portion of the housing demand, because, like it or not, we have, we live in a seasonal community, not just Skeeco, but all the restaurants, all the hotels, you know, all the.
Well, and also, employers aren't going to subsidize a place for a year and guarantee the same person to live there, because if they fire that employee, they'd still be on the hook to pay that person, subsidize that person's rent for a year.
My presentation says that they're allowed up to four, four employee swaps per year. That was what I built in for that very reason. We understand that it's transient.
Is there limits on how many people they can shove into a place?
Two bedrooms, two people?
Two people, that's it.
Yeah, one person per bed.
They're not all bunking up in closets and all that jazz that they're doing.
We'll have property management and supervision and control and I.
My biggest thing is that it's proven that building more homes doesn't help with the housing crisis. You got, there has to be a giant, you get to have an equilibrium through the whole valley. Sure, you can't have more employees, that means you're not building more. These other companies are getting contracts that people in the area live. By building more homes, adding to a valley, or more units, you're not helping the housing crisis. It doesn't work that way. Because there's no equilibrium. You're building more houses, people, more people, more people are coming, more construction, more construction. There is just, it's never-ending. It's a continuous circle. Where if you, if you stop building, there's an equilibrium that'll go through and all, I mean, people leave. I don't have a home, I'm going to go to Texas and work there. You know what I mean? That's how you help a housing crisis, this, but that's my biggest opinion on housing crisis.
This plan is really no different than when the gas company leased the whole top floor of the Holiday Inn over here, rented out all the rooms to their employees. That went on for six, seven years. They leased the top floor, and all went back to their employees. That's all, they lived there.
And another key point, it is, for this population, these professionals, being able to rent for a much lesser price. We are looking into a three-bedroom home in Carbondale, close to $3,000. It's kind, it's very difficult for a person that, you know, makes $30 an hour to pay that amount of money on a $3,000 rent. So by adopting this model, is one model for, I want to come up with the word, and I can't, is just one model for affordable housing, but it would allow people to come in here and pay a lot less in rent.
I think an argument, though, I think one of the things maybe is being said is that instead of it being called affordable housing, it's employee subsidized housing.
Right.
Employer subsidized.
Employer, I'm sorry, employer subsidized.
Also, the central workforce.
No, and I understand that, whoever the workforce is, but that's what, it's more employer subsidized housing than it is.
I'm not sure I call Skeeco essential.
I don't see this. I don't.
Well, people could say that Skeeco is essential to the area, because without Skeeco, what would we have?
Yes, don't need to get into that.
Like we have discussed in the past, there are different approaches to affordable housing. This is just one approach to it. But there are several ones. You can go zoning, this particular zone, you can do this route. There are different ways of basically allowing people to live here and pay a little bit less, but still allow the builder to go in and, you know, build at their correct cost. And there are several parties that would be invested into it. The employer, because a $50,000 deposit is, you know, a $50,000 deposit. And if the employer is paying $1,700 on a two-bedroom, and the employee is 1,100, the employer is invested, that person is paying a lot less, that could mean better quality of life, maybe they would have the energy to actually go out in town and not, you know, and spend money here in Silt.
It's 200 families, we have twice as many, we double the number of two-bedrooms as we have single. That was to handle families of, young families with children and husband and wife, a couple of kids, little kids, living in a bedroom. When I said one person, one bed, I can see, seeing a two-bedroom, I can see two children.
Right.
And we might, we can build in some restrictions if that's what you'd like to see. You know, and these families are going to spend money in Silt, and we're going to pay property, big-time property taxes, and, and so I, and then I've also talked about the fact that we're going to, my business was internet. I ran, I built a company that put fiber in the ground across southern Arizona where there was no cables. We're going to bring our dark fiber into, into the complex with 100 megabits of bandwidth. I propose that if you are interested in running fiber at every parcel in the commercial district of Silt, we can do it dirt cheap, and we can tap in and we can start to, you know, really elevate the community. Our childcare is going to be open to non-campus residents of Silt. We're willing, we're targeting 100 to start, but we got the space to go to 200 or 300 kids. You know, I think there's all sorts of benefits to Silt, and long-term, not just short-term.
I don't see this helping Silt businesses as far as their employee housing. We're not going to get an officer here and supplement their housing forum to put them over there. It's not going, I don't see that happening here. We can't do $20,000.
None of the businesses here can afford the 50K.
Yeah, that's.
You notice that I financed the 50K at least already at one bank. We've already financed it, so, I mean, yeah, they may not have 50 grand, but they can make the payment on it. And it's, look, the cost of having an employee is far more than the payroll tax, and there's health insurance, there's trucks, there's tooling, there's, there's training, and there's housing, if you want to do business in this community, in this valley. It's just, it's an escapable.
Is there a minimum, I guess, getting out of this employer thing, is there a minimum that the employer has to, can an employer buy just one unit for one employee? I mean, it doesn't have to buy a whole block.
No, one.
You know, I guess what I'm getting at is, is maybe, you know, this, I have to see way more of this, but, you know, there's a possibility with this that maybe, you know, the employee might be able to put away some money, maybe end up buying a house in town, put it, you know, stake and say, you know, this is a nice town, I got some money put away, I'm going to buy something, and be a part of the community. I don't know, I mean, I'm just, being this only, I was, that's why I wanted to know if it was one, or two, or five, or whatever.
We're trying to make, we're trying to make this.
All of a sudden, they said, well, you know, hey, you guys, instead of driving up from Junction, we're going to buy two of these. You know, I mean, I'm just saying, being the only, I didn't know if you had to buy 10 or 20, but if they only got to buy one.
Just one. We'll finance it down, we'll finance the 50K and call it a forced savings account. When you're done with the lease, you get the money back. I mean, you're not spending the money, it's being back.
Yeah, they're generally younger folks that are in these units, that they'll eventually, to get older, buy a place in their communities, they raise a family, family grows, without you, yeah.
Then I have a question before we run out of time. My question is, I mean, I like this whole concept, I think, I feel it's a great idea, but in the past, some other people have tried to do something with this property, and then all of a sudden, CDOT is like, no, you guys need to spend millions of dollars to improve
and then all of a sudden C-Dot is like, no, you guys need to spend millions of dollars to improve the interchange. Has, has, have you guys had any thought or discussion on the I-70 interchange?
Uh, oh, you mean?
Yes, and I didn't know.
Putting a new overpass in?
Well, C-Dot making the developer, whoever it is, say, hey, you know, because we had a, basically like a truck stop on it to go in there and C-Dot told these developers, no, you have to spend millions of dollars to improve this interchange. And they said, no, CEO, we're, we're, we're gonna go head west. So I don't know if.
I thought the long-term plan was to replace the overpass long-term.
It is.
Depending on our project.
It is a long-term plan, but C-Dot, C-Dot, so that frontage road is a C-Dot access road, not a town-to-silt road. So they control the access. So they can say, if you want an access off of this frontage road, we want a roundabout at the south side of the overpass.
Yeah.
Yeah, we were thinking about it, it's not on our plan, we were thinking about a roundabout. If we're gonna, especially if we're gonna bring in a raft to stop, for the raft to stop and somewhere on the roundabout have a raft to stop.
Some kind of a turn room for raft to bus there.
Just south of the overpass or right near the property somewhere right there.
Yeah.
So the answer is no, we haven't thought about it, but I guess we better.
Yeah, I just, I, I don't mean to be the downer on this whole thing, but, you know, I just, I just wanted to bring that up.
Yeah, I, I think in, I think once we get into the entitlement process, this is, it'll help eliminate a lot of this stuff and, and we'll have, you know, we may trip over something fatal.
Yeah.
Well, what were they saying about Roseland, Roseland, because they, they're specing a lot of units for that site, right?
Yeah, I mean, the, the traffic study determined acceleration or deceleration lanes at the two intersections for Roseland. So it didn't trigger improvements at the highway intersection. It, it was site-specific improvements that were required.
Do you have any objection to the density, to the elevations, to, to things that would typically trigger concern?
191 units, right?
This is Mike Sawyer, the town attorney, if I could take a second.
Yes.
You know, normally something like this would be brought in as a sketch plan review and so the planning department had an opportunity to chime in on.
Sure.
The town zoning and, and the comp plan.
Sure.
That hasn't been done here. Uh, and I do wanna remind council that this property under the comp plan is called service and commercial support. And that it says those properties within the comp plan land use designation of service and commercial support are outside the downtown area but are expected to have good visibility from Main Street in the I-70 corridor. The service and commercial support designation is not expected to be more than two blocks north of Highway 6, blah, blah, blah. Uh, property should look inviting, aesthetically professional, and the core competency is that it's commercial land. And I would just note for the town that this particular property is pretty much the last one that's go, that has the depth to support something of a big, big box retail outlet that is immediately visible from I-70. So to the degree that, that the applicants desire to move forward, they're gonna have to seek a comp plan amendment to deal with the change from commercial to residential. And then I think the council, you're being asked for feedback. I think you need to provide feedback, not only based upon kind of the sketch plan that they've submitted to you, but more specifically, what is it that the town wants to see there and is this consistent with the town's long-term growth?
How would, how would we come to know whether the town would support that or not without spending, you know, 150, $300,000 in the entitlement process?
You'd go through a sketch plan review, which is maybe $10,000.
I see.
And I guess, um, thanks, Mike, that's really helpful. If I could interject, I guess, maybe one of the questions for, for, for the council is, you know, would you support a sketch plan application for a project like this? And would it be helpful for, for you to review a sketch plan application related to the proposed uses that you've seen in this, in this little work session today? And that can be rhetorical or you can, I don't know, I just try to give some guidance, I guess.
What I'd be curious, so it's show, it's showing a commercial office, retail offices, right? On the front end of it? And then last time you were in here, um, you were saying that there's some, uh, open space, park act, trail building or things like this as such.
Yeah, along the river, there's still the Riverwalk. That's a continuation of the Riverwalk in front of the Holiday Inn Express. And then that would be connected to the, what we're hoping, the eventual pedestrian bridge. Which is there any, is that going in, the pedestrian bridge? Is that, is there a timeline for that?
TBD.
TBD when we can find funding.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's going into the, to the west of the existing overpass, a couple of blocks.
That's proposed it.
That's the, that's the plan.
Proposes roughly what?
Seventh Street?
That's the plan, yeah.
Yeah, Seventh Street, yes.
So, so there's been no change to the plan for the recreational, that's all still the same?
Yeah.
Yeah, but the thought was connect, you know, connect the Riverwalks. The residents can walk along the river, connect that to the pedestrian bridge and go into town, you know? That it's all, and people from town can do the vice versa and connect all the way over to the Roselandi property as well. The community center over there, kind of bridge the, make that all a bridge to downtown.
Do you know of any other projects of this scale that operate on the same model?
Nope. And, you know, so the, the element of the model that's unique is the deposit. And, you know, the, the, the recovery plan, if is, that doesn't work, either you lower it. Either way, either way, we need the money, we need the 10 million bucks. And this is just part, it's part of the bottom. So we get it either through borrowing it and, and increasing the employer, employer portion of the rent to pay the debt service, or we get it this way. Now, if we, if we, if we borrow it and it, and it increases the rent, it's an expense. The way it is now, it's an asset and they get it back.
They get it back, yeah.
And so, you know, yeah, if they're, if they finance it at the bank, they'll be at some interest cost. But, you know, they still end up with 50 grand whenever they decide to walk. Um, so I, I think, uh, we're, we're prepared to do it either way. Um, it's just, if I, I, I'm an, I've been an entrepreneur for 58 years and if I was confronted with these choices, I would cho, choose the one I presented and built into the plan. That's.
Mr. Mayor, we are at 40 minutes now.
Okay.
More than generous, by the way, thank you very much.
One quick thing I'd like to, I, if things like this, would you, would a couple heavily discounted units be available for town employees, silt town employees?
We certainly are willing, we certainly want the town to participate. If you need to discount, we can figure out a way to cut a deal with it, yeah.
You know what I mean, good, but that's just an idea.
I would like to, personally, you know, this is a, a large project with a lot of information stuffed into a little bit of time.
I understand.
Um, I would like to have another meeting if that's.
Glad to, glad to be, to give it to you. Do you tell us when?
If everyone's okay with that to direct staff, because I'd like to do some more. I know that you've said there's no project like this, I'd like to do some research and see if I can find something close to it. Um, and see how that model.
If I can just ask you if we can have it before the end of the year. I'm, I have a personal health problem, I'm, I've got bladder cancer. I'm being, I'm in chemotherapy and I'm, I'm gonna have my bladder removed in January, so.
Okay.
I'd like, I'd like to have a meeting before the end of the year if we can.
We don't have any more meetings prior to the end of the year. This is the last one this year because of the holiday.
When's the first one in January? When's the?
January 9th.
That'll be the day after my surgery, so I, I won't participate.
January 8th.
That's the day of my surgery.
Yeah, I was looking at last year's calendar.
They have even worse.
Even worse, yeah.
Is there an opportunity for the rest of the team to make a presentation and participate in a discussion with a, an agenda item at the next meeting?
Sure.
And, and move forward with sketch plans and whatnot?
You're willing, able and recovered enough, it's a, I mean.
It sounds like the board is highly interested.
We're intrigued, it just has some concerns. Yeah, I think, I think you do see these master lease types of programs in Denver and other metro areas and it is, I think it hasn't been really seen too much in the valley here, but, but there has been, there are models of this throughout the country that maybe we can bring in some examples of.
Maybe just not the scope of this many units or something for one.
Oh, no, in like metro areas, there, there are large projects like this, but this is silt, yeah. This is 200 units, it's a lot of units, boom, for a small town.
I mean, 400 people, it's.
We can phase it, but yeah.
Whatever percentage of our population, just poof.
Yeah.
Well, that would give you some time to reach out to C-Dot too and just feel, just, you know, like you said, just, just check. I mean, it can hurt.
Yeah, yep, yep.
And you're also, I mean, I don't know if ex parte communication is, is legal or not, but you're welcome to email me and talk to me and, and talk to, and I'll talk to the group and.
Yeah, if we have any questions, we can, as a board, get them to our town administrator and he can reach out.
Yeah, sure.
Maybe a good guy, maybe what you guys wanna present or something like that?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm back here on the 23rd and I'm good till the 2nd of, of January, so.
Okay.
Okay. All right, well, yeah, we'll, uh, see if staff can set up an agenda item and we can have a, a further discussion and some more information by then hopefully.
Again, we really appreciate the opportunity to get to you in front of you so fast and.
Thank you very much.
It's a unique project, so we need to spend some time.
I hope, we hope you love it, so, hope you learn to love it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you guys for coming in tonight. All right, next up is the drinking water revolving fund loan bond sales for the water rate update with Jim Mann and I will turn this over to him. You guys have a good night.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Um, I think, uh, you guys should all be very happy with the results from the, uh, uh, the bond sale for the wa, uh, water treatment plant. Um, just gonna give you kind of a high-level view of everything that happened in the last couple of weeks. But so if we can advance to the next slide, again, just kinda covering the cost of the project. You've got the firm construction costs, you've got design and engineering, the C-Mar pre-construction and then construction management, which I understand that's come down even a little bit more. But you've got a total project cost with all the design and engineering and construction management services of 27,656,636. So if we go to the next slide, um, you can see that a, uh, borrowing package was put together that had, you know, the three tranches, one tranche being, uh, a direct loan at 1%, one tranche being, uh, direct loan at 3% and then the market rate loan, uh, which we just completed the financing, um, a, a couple of weeks ago, um, in the amount of 12,732,168. Your total borrowing package was 16,921,993. Uh, and that was based on, uh, the project cost less the committed, uh, 10,395,000 dollars worth of various aid packages that were included to bring that cost down. In the bond sale itself, if you look at, nope, stay on that last slide. In the bond sale yourself, if you look at those issuance costs, et cetera, uh, and the premium, there was about a five, just shy of a $500,000 premium, which means that the borrower actually gave you more money upfront, which allowed you to bring the overall borrowing down a little bit by that amount. Um, it was the decision of the board previously that you would use cash uh, for the bond council and local council estimates for the work that was done for the, the actual bond sale. And so on the next page, um, the results of the sale, and this is really where the rubber meets the road. The last estimate that we had received from the state was that we were figuring about a 3.88% borrowing rate as a subsidized rate. Uh, what turned out in terms of the actual bond sale was 3.05. So that, um, you know, basically is a vast improvement from where we were. Um, again, the borrowing package came down from what we thought was gonna be a little over 17 million, uh, down to the 16,921,933. And the, the more important item is that because that interest rate is lower and the principal is slightly less, your actual borrowing cost over the repayment period for the three loans dropped from about 24,800,000 to 23,334,000 dollars, which, you know, when it comes to paying the money back, that's the big issue right there is having less principal and interest that you're gonna pay in the future. So what does that boil down to? Uh, the next slide. Um, we had adopted user rates that in step one, uh, took the average user to $74.07. Uh, we had planned on January 1 to go to $105.62 for that average user. Uh, based upon the reduced borrowing and the lower interest rate, we are recommending that you should be able to do 102 point, uh, $102.92 on that average user. So it's a slight improvement and a, again, we've been really just moving with that base rate in terms of what that overall impact is going to be. Uh, but we, we've brought that down rather significantly. And I think if you go back in history, uh, to, uh, when we started this process, we thought, you know, the full-fledged package was gonna be somewhere around, uh, $150 a month. And through the efforts of staff and obtaining, uh, a lot of that principal forgiveness and some additional grants and the, the efforts of the engineering group as well as Garnie, you've brought the cost down of the overall project uh, so that you've been able to bring that overall average monthly impact down rather significantly from what we thought it was going to be to begin with. And based upon our, you know, our last go-around in terms of looking at what those rates, what we thought they were gonna be, we've been able to bring them down even further. And, you know, as, as the town completes the construction project and really gets into operating the, uh, the new, the, the new plant, um, we've got estimates in there in terms of what it's gonna cost to operate and some of the efficiencies that are gonna be there, et cetera. You won't really know that until you really get into operating plant, but hopefully, uh, over time, you can even skinny those numbers up even further and maybe you can bring that, uh, overall impact down even further. But so at this point, our recommendation is that instead of a, uh, proposed monthly increase of $31.55, that you really only need to look at an additional increase of $28.85 on the average user, uh, to keep the utility, one, in, uh, compliance with the covenants in terms of making your debt payments, but then also operating the utility. And so I'm gonna stop right there for a second and see if anybody has any questions. I think, um, at the end of the day, um, very positively, you hit the market as well timed as you could hit it, uh, given what had happened leading up to the point where you were selling the bonds. We kept watching rates increase, but probably in the three or four weeks prior to the actual bond sale, the economic data came out and there wasn't another Fed rate increase which would have driven rates even higher. In fact, the, uh, the market started to actually kinda contemplate that interest rates may be coming down sooner than, uh, what was originally anticipated. So all those things worked in your favor at the end of the day. Pushing the sale off until the end of November worked out. Um, you'll, you know, get those dollars, uh, get the bonds closed on and we'll be in a position where the funds will be reseeded by, uh, the town or at least it'll go in the, uh, the, the accounts for the town to use so there won't be any carryover of advanced funds or anything like that. So, um, the town's in, in very good shape to get this project off the ground and move forward with it at less of an impact than what was originally anticipated.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? Okay.
No, it looks good, yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All I can say is I think it was good news all the way around.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I think a lot of credit goes to, um, the, uh, um, the staff, the consultants that you've used in terms of, uh, obtaining those, um, principal forgiveness and the other grants that you've got that brings those, those costs down as much as possible. Um, so that, you know, you're taking care of probably the largest infrastructure issue that the town is faced with currently, um, and you're doing it in the most efficient way that you can do it.
Okay. I think it's the, almost the best news we could receive since no one wanted to give us an extra 23 million. I think it's the, almost the best news we could receive since no one wanted to give us an extra twenty three million.
Other than getting a free.
A free water plant, but yeah. But no, definitely.
It is always better.
Yeah. But no, a huge thank you to staff and in this board for tranching through this and, you know, we're going to have a shovel ceremony here pretty soon.
Yeah. When's groundbreaking?
January or December 12th, I think.
Without all of this work that we've done with all this, projects like that last one was being discussed, wouldn't have even been something we could consider.
Yeah.
So it's nice though, at least with this, it gives us the opportunities to, to consider things like that. Because without this, that would have been no. Can't even talk about it.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. It's been a pleasure working with you and I look forward to future opportunities to continue helping the town out.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thanks, Jim. Amy and Sheila, how do we want to handle that? If the board decides they want to reduce that rate, would they do that during the budget consideration?
I have, um, it's in the budget at the ninety two fifteen. I've made that.
See, you're way ahead of me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
All right.
Way to go, Amy, taking the good news and running with it.
I figured you weren't going to say, nah, just leave it at the ninety four because you wanted to get it further and further down, so.
All right.
All right, well, next up is the resolution number thirty nine, series twenty twenty three. A resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Town of Silt, Colorado, acting by and through its water and wastewater activity enterprise, authorizing the town to execute a contract amendment number two for phase two, uh, construction services of the water treatment plant.
Mr. Mayor Mike Sawyer here to handle that agenda item.
Okay, sounds good.
So, uh, presented to you as a resolution for approval that would uh, adopt an amendment to the agreement that we currently have with Garni Construction. So as the board may remember, you know, back in, I think it was June, uh, we entered into an initial uh, agreement with Garni whereby they were providing pre-construction services to help our engineer focus on cost savings and constructability issues. Uh, then a couple of months ago, we adopted a First Amendment to that agreement that uh, provided for pre-construction procurement. The idea being we didn't want long lead time items to hold us back uh, from when construction starts. So we authorized uh, that, that pre-construction uh, part of the work. And uh, before you today is contract amendment number two. And this document essentially implements two things. One is it says, Garni, you are hereby hired to construct the water treatment plant and we want you to get going as soon as possible. Uh, and number two, the amendment sets forth the guaranteed maximum price uh, for the, for the project. And that number, if you look at the page two of the Garni contract attached to the resolution, that number is twenty four million, five five, five hundred and fifty six thousand, oh, five three, and that is based upon a hundred percent final construction drawings. Uh, of that amount, there's the already included the two hundred-ish thousand dollars for pre-construction and then the five point eight million for uh, pre-construction procurement, which we, we uh, had previously budgeted for that. Um, the uh, the guaranteed maximum price includes a ten point, a ten percent uh, contingency to allow for things that might crop up or be more expensive as the project uh, unfolds. If that contingency is unspent, that money goes back to the town. So that's a, you know, it's a good planning mechanism, but it's not necessarily an increased cost. Uh, as part of the second contract amendment, there are uh, what Garni has termed general and supplementary, supplementary uh, conditions, there are a few things that they're say, stating upfront that, you know, they, they can't guarantee that the price will stick. Uh, an example would be that they find uh, a bunch of toxic barrels underneath the, uh, you know, underneath the plant and that there's a requirement to remediate an environmental condition or something like that. We went through those conditions, the, the limitations with both Trey and with Dewberry's engineer. Uh, and I think both Jeff and I left with the impression that the, the, the little items that aren't necessarily subject to the guaranteed maximum price are of very low uh, probability of coming into play. So I, you know, the, the second amendment, it's, it's not terribly complex. Uh, but again, the two main things that it does is implement the guaranteed maximum price and tell Garni that they're the ones building the project, so get on with it. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have about, uh, about the amendment.
I don't have anything.
No, I don't have any questions.
I have, I have a quick question about the substantial and final completion dates. What happens if they slip?
Uh, then they are in breach of contract and they would owe the town money for each additional day that they go past the, the completion dates.
Okay.
And do we have a schedule of costs that that would be if they go over that date?
That's a good question, Mr. Mayor. I, I did not pull up the original contract to look for that. Um, certainly I can work on that if that's real important to the board's decision. But again, the, you know, the, the completion dates come with financial penalties if the project.
I was asking in principle, not knowing the specific costs.
Yeah.
Just because I think anybody who's seen any large scale projects in our surrounding, let's say, hundred miles, they rarely get done on time, or they have rarely gotten done on time. I think about the Twenty Seventh Street Bridge in Glenwood, I think about Rafta's big project that they did all throughout the Roaring Fork Valley. Those all ran over in terms of cost and time. So seeing the guaranteed maximum price and knowing that there are penalties for being late gives me a lot of confidence.
Yeah.
Me too.
The only other question I had is the one point three million to Dewberry for construction management part of this.
Mr. Mayor, I regret to inform you that at our first January meeting, we will be presenting you with a contract amendment to the Dewberry contract.
Okay.
So that is a, that is a separate pool of money that, uh, and contract that, that handles that.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. This is just an action item and not a public hearing, so. Any further discussion by the board or would someone like to make a motion?
Oh, I actually have another quick question. I apologize for jumping in there at the eleventh hour, such as it is nearly. The ten point five percent contractor's fee, this, this number was the same during phase one as it will be in phase two, right? That number isn't changing?
The, the ten point five percent is consistent across the contract amendments, yes.
Thank you. I know it references like, I think like an article seven, but I didn't see it in this deck.
Yeah, the, the article, Article seven is the main contract, which again is one of the contract, it's the make up the master contract, so.
Got it. Okay, as long as we know it's the same. Thank you, Attorney Sawyer.
Do we have to add anything to this resolution to present it or just say approved as it read? Would he, he had added them a couple of things. Do we don't need to add them in this, do we?
I don't think we added anything.
No.
No, he was talking about the, the other stuff, the numbers and that. The two-part thing, but that's, that's all included in that.
That is. I think it's already there.
But yeah, it's a.
Well, Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number thirty nine, series twenty twenty three as presented.
Second.
Uh, motion by trustee Seifert to approve resolution number thirty nine, series twenty twenty three as presented. That was seconded by Mayor Protem Hanahan. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, everyone. You're uh,
Good job.
On your way to big project and a supply, s- secure source of water for your future.
We're in the water plant business.
Okay.
Okay. Next up then is resolution number forty, series of twenty twenty three. A resolution to adopt the Town of Silt budget for calendar year twenty twenty four, appropriate funds and levy property taxes. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman and Treasurer Tucker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in your packet, uh, you'll see those three resolutions, uh, resolution forties. And uh, just to clarify, I believe in the work session, you uh, agreed in principle to uh, select the first one. And by first one, I mean the one, and Amy can correct me if I'm wrong, with the one that uh, shows the property tax levied at eight point nine seven three mils.
Right.
So, um, the other two pages of that, you can, um, disregard for now. Uh, also in the packet was a draft, uh, the line item budget and then a, uh, and then the budget message, which I prepared, um, which goes through just, um, our kind of a year in review for twenty twenty three and then also what, what are the big key things we're looking at for twenty 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 four. Um, and I will say that's a draft. Uh, we don't have to file that until the end of January next year, so we can, uh, with the state, um, so we can make some uh, small tweaks and, well, we can rewrite the whole thing if you like, but we can uh, uh, work on that. Um, when I felt better and prepared this uh, presentation, um, I was intent on talking about our strategic goal snapshot. If you go to the next slide there, Sheila. And, um, right there. Um, and just talk briefly about, um, you'll recall that, uh, we did all of these, all these strategic, all this strategic planning over the last few years with Dana Levak, with, um, with DOLA and we set up our growth priorities, quality of life priorities, internal operations priorities and economic development priorities, uh, and we put them in a, in a table like this. And then the staff has tracked progress against those, um, in kind of the ways that you'll find in the, in the, uh, the pages. Uh, beyond that, with all the colorful striping. I don't intend to go through each of those lines, um, but just so you know that we, um, you know, we do track this and it occurred to me while I was kind of running through this that, you know, it, it might be good for next year uh, to maybe have a, a quarterly check-in on where we are with some of these things, kind of like what we do now with other items, but uh, just to kind of make sure everybody's on board and we're not, um, hitting anybody cold with any of these, um, any of these projects or, or initiatives that, uh, we're moving forward on. So, um, I don't, I'm not going to go through a, a, all of those unless somebody has questions, we can go back and talk about them. And with Trey here, not here today, um, you know, we might have come back on some, but I'm sure Amy can answer most of them. Uh, we could go to the five-year improvement plan. Uh, that's, uh, looking forward. Um, most of those are capital expenditures. And, um, we've obviously put the twenty twenty four expenditures in there in the budget that you have and you'll see those on this uh, chart. Um, initially, I think this chart was, was built, uh, with the idea of, um, accessing grant funds from the federal mineral lease district. And I think over the five years or so that I've been here, uh, it's expanded slightly to include projects from other areas as well. And, um, and, and still doesn't include all of our five-year plans, so. Um, but, uh, so, you know, we probably do need to come up with another, uh, maybe another way of showing, uh, the, the five-year improvement plan. But that can be in our, in our, um, our conversation with Dana in, uh, in the, in the winter. Probably, I think February, end of January, early February is when we're talking about having him come in to talk about, uh, our next five-year. Our next five-year period. So, um, and we can talk a little bit more about how my, how, what, what ways might be handy to both show that plan and the progress toward the plan. Any questions on planning or results from twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four? So the next slide, um, and I went, I went through these slides, uh, I think last time, uh, two weeks ago. And before that, uh, we went through these, we went through the information that's contained in these slides. Uh, maybe add infinite them. We had, uh, all the, um, department heads come in and do a presentation of what they did with the money that, uh, that was given to them, money and resources that were given to them last year. Uh, what they plan to do with those resources for twenty twenty four and, uh, what keeps them up at night, what, what their major challenges are. And, uh, so we've, we've been through this before. I'm not going to go through all these slides in the detail that I have before, uh, because you've already heard it. So, um, and, uh, believe it or not, I do learn from my, uh, performance evaluations. So, uh, unless someone has specific questions on any of these slides, uh, I'm prepared to stop right now.
Okay. Any questions?
No, I think it's pretty good.
I don't have any.
And don't tempt me, you all. My staff, our staff has really been giving me a hard time about the beating the dead horse comment. I think trustee, trustee, um, Flores made one time.
Well, um.
So I think the, the only thing we need to make sure of here is, are we going to, whoever, if someone makes a motion, we'll need to adjust the general fund by that additional amount to add two officers.
Do we need to have a specific figure or can we just say the two off, adding two patrol officers? Or do we need a specific dollar number?
Right now, I don't know if this makes a difference, but right now I have eight officers in the budget, so maybe say ten officers. Instead of, you know, two, you can say we've.
To include ten officers in the budget?
To include.
Yeah, I don't know if that makes it easier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think so. Sounds good.
Don't, don't we also need to include language about keeping the mill levy the same? Wasn't that another?
That would.
Item that came up during our work session?
Using the mill levy of the eight point nine.
Yeah, she already.
Said eight point nine five three, yeah.
As. She already adjusted that.
Yeah, we just need to make sure when we, so there's three different resolutions are all labeled number forty. So I would just say make a motion to approve resolution number forty, series twenty twenty three with the property tax at eight point nine seven three mils.
And the police officers at ten.
And include up to ten officers. And also, it's already, the water rate, you said you already adjusted for?
Correct, yeah, I have that in there at the ninety two fifteen.
Okay.
As far as revenues go.
So we don't need to add that in there? Okay.
And I decreased our, um, principal and interest as well because of the lower interest rate.
So once we get there, it'll just be those two changes. Or two additions. Not necessarily changes, so.
I have a quick question, and I'm not sure why I'm missing it. But on the resolution number forty, you know, the first page there, it says you know, twenty-nine million, and then Jeff's letter to the board, it says thirty-one million. Why am I, why am I not seeing the difference? Or what is the difference?
I don't know if Jeff is still on. It may have been when he wrote the letter, that was what our revenues were going to be at that moment. But they have changed, like I've reduced some of it because we're not our water rate is going from ninety-four, eighty-five to ninety-two fifteen. There's just certain things that have changed most likely from when he drafted that letter.
All right, thank you for the clarification there.
That's a great catch.
Okay. Any other discussion before I open up the public hearing? All right. Uh, seeing none, the time is now eight thirty-six PM, and I'll open up the public hearing uh, in regards to resolution number forty, series twenty twenty-three. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, sir.
Okay.
And I don't show any raised hands.
All right. And we have nobody here in the chambers with us. So the time is eight thirty-seven PM, and I will close the public hearing and open it up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
You were taking notes, I figured. You would do the honors. Scratch them.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve resolution number forty, series twenty twenty-three with leaving the mill levy at eight point nine five three. And, and adding to have a maximum of ten officers in the budget.
Uh, point of order, the mill should be eight point nine seven three.
Nine seven three, okay. I got them backwards. Excuse me, nine seven three. And then to include ten officers.
And I'll second.
Okay.
Or up to a ten officers, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, motion by uh trustee Seifert to approve resolution number forty, series twenty twenty-three. Leaving the mill, uh, the property tax mill levy at eight point nine seven three. And for allowing a budget to include up to ten officers.
Mr. Mayor, uh, do we have to do those two together? To approve, because I would feel inclined to approve uh, for voting on the budget, but not, not necessarily on the levy.
Um, we've had a motion in a second. So.
I waited you long.
Yep. And we have to have the, the property tax has to be included in the budget, because that's what the general fund
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Yes, we'd have to do them at the same time, so. Um, and that motion was seconded by Mayor Protem Handerhan. All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Uh, thank you to staff for another budget season. Funnest time of the year, leads right into Christmas. And uh, just thanks for everything, lots of hard work.
We are popular here in chambers for this rare moment during budget when everybody wants money, though, so that's, it's good to see people in the room.
Yeah. Okay, next up is resolution number forty-one, series twenty twenty-three. Uh, resolution to adopt the Silt Housing Authority budget for calendar year twenty twenty-four and appropriate funds. And I will turn this over to Administrator Lehman and Treasurer Tucker.
I have nothing to add on this. Uh, you'll note that uh, the slide uh, on this uh on this budget item was included in that other slideshow. And
It just includes uh, Silt Housing and the um, the condo. Or senior housing and the condo. It takes care of both of those.
Okay.
Right.
All right. Any discussion by the board?
No. No.
Okay.
As much as you can.
All right. Uh, then the time is eight forty PM, and I'll open up the public hearing uh, for resolution number forty-one, series twenty twenty-three. Uh, persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
No, I did not hear from anyone. And I have no raised hands.
Okay. And we still have nobody here in the chambers with us, so. Uh, the time is eight forty-one PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution number forty-one, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution to adopt the Silt Housing Authority budget for calendar year twenty twenty-four and appropriate funds.
I'll second.
Uh, motion by trustee Clausen to approve resolution number forty-one, series twenty twenty-three. A resolution to adopt the Silt Housing Authority budget for calendar year twenty twenty-four and appropriate funds. That was seconded by Mayor Protem Handerhan. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And now we have resolution number forty-two, series twenty twenty-three. A resolution to adopt uh, the Silt Urban Renewal Authority budget for calendar year twenty twenty-four and appropriate funds. And I'll turn this one back over to Administrator Lehman.
Similarly, in your packet, the slide, and uh, we're uh, open to answering questions you might have.
All right. Any discussion by the board?
I don't have anything.
All right. Uh, the time is now eight forty-one PM, and I'll open up the public hearing for resolution number forty-two, series twenty twenty-three. Persons desiring to make a public comment on this agenda item, please activate the raised hand function in the meeting program. Or Sheila, any phone calls or emails in regards to this agenda item?
Yes, sir.
All right.
I show no raised hands.
And once again, nobody joined us in the chambers. Uh, the time is eight forty-two PM, and I will close the public hearing and open up to further discussion by the board or a motion.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number forty-two, series twenty twenty-three, a resolution to adopt the Silt Urban Renewal Authority budget for calendar year twenty twenty-four and appropriate funds.
Second?
Uh, motion by trustee Clausen to approve resolution number forty-two, series twenty twenty-three. Uh, seconded by uh trustee Poston. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. And next up is the award of the fuel bid for the town. And I will turn this over to whoever's gonna run on this one.
I will run it. Uh, just, I, I might butcher it because Trey's not here. This would normally be his deal. Uh, periodically, we bid out our uh, fuel account. And uh, the last time we, uh, well, we did it just this year. Um, for next year, uh, our bid, best price we got was um, from Golden Gate at uh, about at five cents off their cash pricing. And uh, so it's our recommendation that we go forward with the, and awarding the bid to Golden Gate.
All right. Any question by members of staff or members of the board?
No.
Currently, are they? Five cents off the cash price, and it's definitely big. Cause that's lower than the other by far.
Who are they with currently?
I think we're with Golden Gate currently.
We are using Golden Gate um, when Good To Go uh, took over. Um, what was that called? Gopher Foods?
Yeah.
We were with Sinclair, and it was, it's a Wex account, and Golden Gate takes that. So we're not getting the same price that we would get with this one, but we are currently using Golden Gate because they take the Wex card that we had started with Govers.
Oh, okay.
How much, how much do we spend on fuel in a year?
Oh, um.
I stopped Amy, wow.
Well, I don't, I don't put them into the system anymore, so give me, give me a second, and I will search the vendor and tell you.
Rough numbers, fine, I was just curious. It's not
Rough numbers aren't okay for Amy. She wants to know exactly now.
Panic sets in.
I wanna know exactly now after he asks the question.
Oh, I'm gonna have to actually do the I'll run the numbers and let you know.
Okay.
Unaccepted.
She's gonna beat you up.
It'll be determined.
I, I was just curious. I think it's, it's good for Golden Gate. If they want to offer us a discount, let's absolutely spend our money there. I was just curious how much money that is.
So far this year, and we haven't paid for December, is about forty-five thousand, forty-five thousand, four dollars and ninety-six cents.
That's exact.
And we still have December. And so it ranges, you know, in the summertime, it's more expensive because we're, you know, using mowers and cutting parks and things like that, so.
And that includes polit- police cars, right?
It includes police, public works, um, whether that takes care of parks or streets, uh, water, wastewater, admin, um, everybody. Any vehicle that is driven for uh, town purposes. Including the skid steer and the street sweeper, and I mean, it's any and every vehicle.
It's a good move by Golden Gate. They're getting forty-five to fifty K in revenue in one contract. It's a no-brainer.
Yeah.
It's about just over four thousand, forty, just about five thousand a month almost. It's pretty good.
For sure. And that, I mean, that's guaranteed money.
And it's convenient in that we already have the card that they use, so we don't have to mess with changing something.
That's a win-win.
That makes Amy's job easier.
Well, it may be a little different. They actually bill twice a month instead of once a month. So um, I don't know if it will be the Wex that we are currently using. I just know they take that card, which is why we went over there when Good To Go took over.
Got it.
Okay. This is an action item, so someone wants to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to award um
The town fuel account?
Yeah, the two, what um, what company is it?
Golden Gate.
Golden Gate. Field bid to Golden Gate.
Second.
Okay. Uh, motion by trustee Forrest to award the town uh, fuel account to Golden Gate. That was seconded by trustee Poston. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up is administrator and staff reports. Does any staff want to make a report?
I don't have anything to add, but I'm sure we're all biting at the bit to respond to any questions you have about it. The reports that were submitted as part of the packet or anything else that comes up.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on staff reports?
Nope.
Not on staff reports, but I have a question for staff.
Okay.
Um, my question relates to and maybe Jeff can answer this. The uh, uh, the PNZ member Dana Wood, her question. Do we know? I mean, I looked at it, and it looks like something interesting. Is there any in, any more information on that that you guys know of?
What's the, I don't understand.
Can you be specific about what Dana, that was the email she sent?
Anyway, I'm sorry. She, she had a comment on the workforce housing report. And she says, hi, everyone. I just received a report from the Colorado Association of Ski Towns around workforce housing that was completed in October. And there was a page thirty, oh wait, what was she saying? Page? She said, I want to send this along as an FYI, but also see if folks might be interested in having a conversation about the real estate transfer revenue, and it's page twenty-three of this workforce housing report. And I just assumed that everybody got the email.
I did, but I did not read that.
I, I got it. I haven't looked at the report in detail.
Oh, okay.
Nope, I haven't.
But then maybe we, we can make it a discussion item someday in the future?
Yeah, and I think that's the way I uh, when I saw that, that's the way I um regarded that. We um, obviously have some plans as far as uh we've had some conversations about reviewing the code and revising the code so that it's um, more uh, friendly, friendlier, I guess, to affordable housing and
I guess that's my question, if, if we can have a discussion on, on that issue in the future.
For sure. That, that's definitely a twenty twenty-four agen- uh, agenda for the town, I think.
Sounds good.
Okay.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we're gonna have a few conversations next year on affordable workforce supplemented housing. Very long discussion, yeah. Okay. Um, we'll just do board comments, Chris, and just start with you.
All right. Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to thank all of the staff and everybody who has worked really hard on, on the budget and the water plant and and all of that. And I just had, had a comment. I noticed that they're still working on the sewer line behind eight-ten main. And this weekend, that alley was closed, but everybody was cutting through the muddy lot, driving over the sidewalk and tracking mud all over the sidewalk in the street and everything, and I just didn't know y- you know, if
Still away today, because I went to the, I went in there today. You gotta, you can't go out the entrance there. You gotta go out of, over the curb. It's the only way out of there.
Yeah.
Cause you turn into the liquor store or to the pizza place. It's a one-way, so you gotta turn and go around. That's close, so you gotta go over the curb to get out of there.
Yeah. And you know, the alley's closed, so they shouldn't even, they shouldn't even do that.
The alley doesn't look like it needs to be closed. I don't understand.
Yeah. So I just wondered if who's gonna clean that up? You know, that was my only
I'm just worried a car going to go over there and gonna tear the whole bottom off.
Yeah, exactly. Well, it's, it's private property. They shouldn't be driving there anyway. But anyway, that was my, my only gripe this, this meeting. So.
Okay. I think staff will take that and do what they need to with it.
Yeah.
Okay, trustee Seifert?
Um, I have nothing other than good work to everybody that worked on it. We got a lot accomplished tonight, and we didn't rip out anybody's throat, so we got along good, so. Okay. Congratulations to everybody on the board.
All right, Mayor Protem?
Uh, just that I appreciate us staying on task and on time. I think this is kind of the first go-around with this revised model. I think it went well, particularly given the importance of some of the tasks on the list. So yeah, thanks to everybody. Uh, elect trustee Seifert, I also appreciate it when there's a difference of, of view uh, ac- across the board, and it's great to hear everybody participating. And also, in case you didn't know, take another look at Amy's monthly report. You may not be aware, but she worked on the budget. It's, it's subtle, but it's there. I just want, it's in the fine print, in a ninety font.
Okay. Trustee Poston?
I'm here, um, trustee Clausen on thanking everyone for the hard work for the water plant, the budget. And uh, thank you for town staff and the police department for keeping us safe out there. And thank you to each one of you board members that come in and bring your insights and energy and are really willing to work together um, for the town of Silt. Want to wish everybody Merry Christmas and a wonderful new year.
All right. Trustee Forrest?
Yeah, it's been a very long year with the water plant and the budget on top of that. Great job, everyone. Getting along and making the things, uh, making the community of Silt a better place. Um, I'm happy that uh, we all agree on bringing two more officers on board if we can. That's a pretty big deal. And uh, yeah, happy Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everybody.
All right, trustee Breton.
I think they all pretty much said it. Just uh, thanks for all, all the great work that the towns accomplished this year. Got a lot of neat things. Near, near to my heart was the horseshoe pits. Look forward to some great events, some sanctioned state horseshoe tournaments and all kinds of fun stuff. Um, really interested and excited about possible things over at the communities, community center park. If we were to get that grant, that could be a huge If we were to get that grant, that could be a huge renovation for over there. Really make things neat, and then just excited for all the future stuff of the town.
All right. Hopefully Larry Stewart went back home and continued to watch the rest of our meeting. I do appreciate the chamber coming in. I know we have hit them hard recently, probably for the last year. So for them to being, being willing to still come in and talk to us and, and share their plan and vision, I really appreciate that. Appreciate everyone on this board. We made it through another, another year together. We will not have another meeting until 2024. Thank you to staff. And, you know, it was a great employee appreciation event that we had at the bowling alley, so thanks to everyone that came out for that. And that's all I've got. So for the last time in 2023, the next item on the agenda is adjournment.
Mr. Mayor, do you want to adjourn?
Second.
All right. Motion by trustee Britton to adjourn the meeting, seconded by trustee Clausen. All's in favor?
Aye.
All's opposed? Motion carries unanimously.